Who have given their time and energy and for a greater cause than just themselves, but for the thinking of the community. Lord, I thank you for witty inventions and ideas to flow through them, that they can make this community a light to everyone around. We thank you for Davis County. We thank you for the people that live here. We ask your blessing and your grace and your mercy. See, that they have to make, they have to make a lot of difficult decisions. But, Lord, I thank you that you give them wisdom, your wisdom. Those, I thank you that they have godly wisdom to, that flow from your throne, Lord, that you show them your way, that our community can be a light to all the communities. We thank you in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much. All right, we got the meeting minutes from, just live the 12th meeting. The chancellor's over.
Yeah, I did not see any changes.
Nor did I.
Not look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, how about Chris?
Morning. I guess that.
Yeah, we, we had a special meeting, if you wanted to just talk on that real quick.
After we got the bridge bid, we had a meeting with the town of Montgomery and consultant and the commissioners about if we wanted to pursue the bid or not, basically is about all it was. We wanted to move forward with the project and, and get it under contract. And so I guess the consensus was, yes, we do. So then I'm gonna propose that we accept the loan bid that we got from Milestone to get the bridge, the Montgomery Bridge 155 under contract. I don't know if I've got all the, the proper paperwork with me today, but I will get it to you, whatever we need to sign.
Yeah. What you guys' pleasure on?
Yeah, I think we definitely want to follow the town of Montgomery's lead and it's, it's clear that they want to proceed forward with the bridge. So we've reached out to the council, make sure that they're abreast of, you know, some of the information we have. So we all agree that bridge needs to be replaced. So there's no better time than now to do it. So, yeah, I think the consensus was we want to move forward, we'll work with Milestone to fine tune the bid and let's get the project rolling.
Anything on Ron?
No, it's, it's either you do it or you forget it, and I don't think we can forget it, so.
I think time now, because the longer the wait, the higher the price is gonna be, so.
And then we get in jeopardy of losing our grant that we've, our million dollar grant that we have for the bridge.
Right. So no other questions or anything? I'd look for a motion to approve milestone single bid.
Assumed.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Chris?
Hey, other than that, I don't have no update on any other projects. Everything's kind of a standstill of what we're doing. The rain came in the storm Sunday night, we've been doing cleanup all Sunday night and all day yesterday and probably a little bit more today with the flooding and the trees down and the culverts that are been washed out. So I've gotta get a little report together for Scott Myers to turn in, so.
They have a lot of damage on the culvert pipes.
We, yeah, we had, on the way here, I got a call that one was washed out, so if a culvert pipe has a little hole in the bottom of it or something rust through, then the water gets underneath of it and pulls it right out of the road, so.
Yeah.
That, we've been trying to work with the sheriff's department, putting, putting signs up too, but I believe we're about out of signs right now. There's more roads and, and we've got high water signs, road closed signs, but that would be where I think everybody posts, you know, tell the public to turn around and not drive through high water. I think there are slogans, turnaround, don't drown.
Right.
If there's high water over a place, that usually means there's a, it's a low area, and if it's a low area, it's got a culvert for the water to cross the road, and sometimes the water takes the culvert out, so.
Yeah, you don't know if the roads are.
You don't know until you're in it, and then you're nose deep in it, so that's kind of what we're working on.
Yeah. I don't think the weather's gonna help you guys anytime soon this week.
No, not this week. We were planning on starting our, our tiling to upgrade various county roads Monday, and that kind of got put off to the side.
Yeah.
And then last week I didn't, or last commissioners meeting, I didn't have a big report for you guys, and I thought, you know, I'll come in Monday, I'll put a big report together, and, well, I was out Sunday night, half the night, and Monday was, we were busy, didn't have no power, so that's where we're at. But I did get the bid in and the LPA voucher.
Yeah, there we go. You guys have anything else, anything else for Chris?
Yeah, thank you.
By the way, we did have a highway meeting this morning out there, and people present was myself, Nathan, Ron, and Chris. I'm gonna talk about employee injury, drainage on, out in View Road, tiling roads, kosher and salt. Anything else, Chris?
No, that's it for me.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
All right, we got Davis County Economic Development Annual Review. Morning, Brian.
Good morning. How was everyone's float to work this morning?
Pretty good.
Yeah, good.
Somebody said you were on a time restriction this morning.
Oh, is that right?
Five minutes or something?
Oh, I'm okay with that.
About 10 minutes?
That'd be great, that'd be great, yes. And I think everyone would appreciate that.
Because your predecessor talks so long, we thought we had, we gotta get some guidelines.
Yeah, you know, we really tried to switch things up. I mean, I hate to talk too much with him here.
We went out by lunch.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, hey, good morning to everyone. Per our contract, I am obligated, right, to come in and give you guys an annual update just on our activities of the previous year and what we're looking forward to in the coming year. So here that is, right, here's that update. So Auditor's Office team, is that all right if you guys be my slide cue? Okay, next, next slide, if you don't mind. So just as a reminder, this is our mission and our vision with the Davis County Economic Development Corporation. Our mission is to improve the standard of living in Davis County by expanding and diversifying the economic base, promoting quality employment opportunities and enhancing the overall quality of place. Our vision is a big goal, right, but I'm, might be a little partial, I think we all might be, but I think we're on our way. So, next slide, please. Just want to acknowledge the folks that are on our Board of Directors. That's a pretty long list, I know you probably can't see it from there, you should have a printout, but Nathan Gabhart is your appointment with the county. He's done a great job, he's been serving since January, is that right, Nathan?
Yes.
So Nathan's on our executive committee, on our executive team, and this is our list of government officials, business partners that are all supporting our organization. This list is much larger than that, right, in terms of our investors in the organization, but these are those that sit on our Board of Directors. So we've got a good, well-rounded group, and I'm grateful to all of them investing in our organization. So, next slide, please. So just want to give a quick highlight on the numbers, right, because that's, that's what this boils down to from an economic development standpoint. These are taken over the past several years, right? I believe we go back to about 2016 in terms of the amount of projects that our organization has been involved in and that we've been tracking. But since in that timeframe, we've had over 151 million in new direct investment. That's a, it's a very big number, right? It's one we're pretty proud of. It does include GPC's ongoing Maltrian expansion, right, which is about 75, 80 million, so it's a big number, but also some recent projects, TrueRx Health Strategists, Graver Post Buildings, Artisan Electronics up at Westgate, you know, the list goes on, right? I don't have time, and nor do you all have the time to mention them all, but there's been a lot of activity in the past few years, even with us going through a global pandemic and in many ways, right, folks thinking that the world stopped, right? But here in Davis County, and I would argue in southwest Indiana and Indiana as a whole, it very much did not. So with that 151 million, that equates to about 28.2, a little over 28 million in new property taxes, right? So that, that is going to the tax base. In some instances, it's being collected by a TIP district, right, but then is being applied towards the tax base. But that's over a 10-year timeframe. 10 new attraction and expansion projects, 433 new jobs.
That, turn it up.
Yeah, there we go. 358 indirect jobs created over 10 years. So that's from ancillary businesses, supporting those new businesses, right? So generally with manufacturing, you do have support businesses that come up around that and create those indirect jobs. And then 2.2 million dollars in grant dollars received through our organization. So, next slide, please. Want to give a quick highlight on our business retention and expansion efforts. So obviously, that's, that's critical to what we do. I believe per this report with Purdue Extension, about 90% of the new jobs created in your community come from your existing businesses, right, which is a pretty astounding statistic. So working with our existing business community, helping to identify what challenges are in the way for, from, for them growing, right? Are there any risks of them picking up and moving to another community or closing up shop, all right? And how do we help them accelerate that growth is integral of what we do with the Economic Development Corporation. So this past year, in the fall of 2021, we partnered with Purdue Extension and we launched a formal business retention and expansion program. We've done this organically, you know, and I know Ron, you know, obviously did this in his time with the organization, but it really started to put some form to the function of putting together a formal report codifying what the findings were from survey, from, you know, sitting down one-to-one interviews with plant managers, with HR managers, folks, business owners, right, in our community. We had about 12 businesses from, you know, spanning from, you know, industrial and manufacturing all the way to the service industry and everything in between, right? Also, when we picked those businesses, we were very intentional about looking countywide, right, and not having businesses all in one particular geographic area in the county, so we're taking, casting a pretty broad, broad net. And we came together and we pulled, we were pulling together this report, as a matter of fact, in the staff meeting this morning. Joe reported, me, we just have that final report, I got that back from Purdue today, and we'll be sharing that with you all here shortly. So we're excited to see what that comes, comes out with. Obviously, the most important topics are workforce, right, the workforce attraction challenges, workforce development challenges, getting folks through the door, keeping folks in the door to fill the jobs that we have, right? That's, that's obviously been a common trend with the businesses that we've talked to. So, next slide, please. Rural broadband support. So as we all know, you know, we, we are, you know, at the heels of this pandemic, we're coming out of it, right? And we knew that broadband was necessary prior to the pandemic. Going through the pandemic, it really exposed the fact that it's not, no longer just a, you know, a nice thing to have, it's a must-have, right? Especially when you're talking about advancing rural communities to compete in the 21st century economy. So obviously, this past year, we worked with you all, we worked with RTC Communications as the first provider to take advantage of the infrastructure development zone. I know in the past month, they gave their update, which was great to hear the progress that they're making there. As a matter of fact, right now, we are working with a national consultant called JSI. They work with communities like Davis County, they work with municipalities, they work with broadband providers as well, and we have hired them, the Economic Development Corporation has, to lead up a cost benefit analysis and an economic impact model for broadband deployment, so we can start to calculate what those direct impacts are to the economy here in Davis County, and then illustrate what some potential partnerships may be, right? So that infrastructure development zone was very much the first step. When we heard from RTC here about a month ago, we heard that that was, that was kind of the start, but we need to continue to take a look at creative partnerships with our broadband providers, RTC and others, right? So this tool, right, that, that economic impact model and that cost benefit analysis will help us to work with you all, county elected officials, municipal officials, to put together public-private partnerships on, on what that looks like, right? That's beneficial to all parties. So, yes, next slide, please. So I mentioned earlier, workforce is, is what we're hearing from our businesses, it's what we're hearing from the prospect businesses that we're working with as well, right? It is always the single number one biggest point that we talk with, with prospects and existing businesses. So these three, three things, quality of life, workforce, and talent are at the forefront of what we're trying to do with the Economic Development Corporation, and something we're keeping in mind with every effort we take on. Next slide. So, you know, in order to, to accommodate new workforce, in order to accommodate talent, keep the talent we have, we have to have the housing to support them. And we all know that there has been a housing shortage in Davis County for quite some time, right? That is not something we experience alone here in our part of the state or in the country for that matter, but it's, it's something that we have to address regardless, right? So in 2019, we partnered with the Regional Opportunities Initiative on a regional housing study. That study provided to us that Davis County has a need for over 1,120 new housing units by 2030, and we are quickly approaching 2030, it'll be here before we know it. So we've been really excited in the past few months to announce that there are over $26 million investment in new housing projects that have been announced in the past few months that are coming to Davis County. It's about 280 new residential units, all of those announced in, you know, the first half of 2022, so we're excited. The Cypress Point apartment project, which is the bottom photo there, that's actually under construction right now on Highway 50, they almost had the footers pulled cord on the first building. We're hoping to have those, to start leasing those in March of this next year. So that's exciting to see. And then yesterday, last night at the city council meeting, the city council approved a tax abatement for about 70 new apartments, all market rate, again, on the east side of town, further east towards I-69, on about 10 acres north of TrueRx Health Strategist, property formerly owned by Ray Lonaker, has sat there for quite some time. Kirsten's Development out of Jasper is gonna be putting 70 new apartments, 12 to 13 new single-family homes, price points between 225,000 to 275,000, and then eight condominiums on that property. So it's exciting to see, especially that variety of housing coming in, right? There's not a whole lot of market rate apartments here. Cypress Point will be one of the first new developments of its kind to come to Davis County, and then Kirsten's, you know, shortly following that, and the condominiums as well. So it's exciting to see that. So, next slide. From a quality of life standpoint, I would say, you know, our capstone, our keystone project has been the Davis County Commons in downtown. This is something we are partnering with the City of Washington on, we are working very closely with the county as well. The Knights of Columbus in downtown Washington have been extremely, extremely helpful with this process, and we have our 90% design meeting this next week, where we'll be going through some of the materials and, you know, getting into more refined costs on the project. It's been a bit of a moving target as additional properties have opened up that we've been able to expand to, as we've run into some utility challenges on the site. We're right in the heart of downtown Washington with this project, right? So it's one of those, we're dealing with centuries of infrastructure being built on top of one another, literally on top of one another. So we are trying to navigate that, we've had a few hiccups through the process, but we're, we're nearing the end of the design process and hope to begin construction this fall. So that is where we're at on that project. Next slide, please. This is just a plan view of the site, so now you can see it's that three-quarter block area, two pavilions with parking, and then one performing arts pavilion and band shell, right? There will be public restrooms, an open area, some swings, active recreational features all on this site. So it'll be a nice, nice new addition to downtown Washington and to Davis County as a whole. We're incredibly excited about that. So, next slide. You know, and, and I guess maybe from a different perspective, we're trying to take a look at talent attraction a little bit differently with some partnerships. We are partnering with Radius Indiana, our eight-county regional economic development organization, on a program called Choose Southern Indiana, and this is a talent incentive, a workforce incentive to folks looking to move into that eight-county region, Davis County included, from out of state, right? And so far, we've had four that have come to Davis County that have taken advantage of this, this initiative, that have taken local jobs here in Davis County, which is great. One with RTC Communications, two with Washington Community Schools, and then one with, I believe it's Glendale as well. We're actively working with two others, one for Purdue and the other with TrueRx, which is great. So we're seeing some success with that here in Davis County and in the region. It's been a beneficial program because Radius is providing over half, I want to say it's about 60% of the funding, so we're leveraging those regional resources and bringing them to Davis County as well. So that's, that's a new program on the talent attraction side, and from the workforce development standpoint, we have been avidly working with a group of businesses here in Davis County, business leaders, on our Develop Davies Workforce Task Force. It's quite a, quite a mouthful, but it's a group that's come together and we're identifying, trying to identify creative solutions on how we tackle the workforce development and the skills training gaps that are apparent in the workforce that we're, we're working with today, right? So we've identified some solutions to, to bring on some additional capacity with our organization to drive that programming forward, which is, it's, it's kind of, kind of funny, we're, we're having trouble hiring someone for that position when we're talking about communities and, excuse me, our businesses having trouble hiring and thus the need for, for this role. So we've had it out there for quite some time, had some interviews, but we're still, still in the search for our Director of Workforce Development and what happens there. So, next slide, please. And this is one that I'm, I'm really excited about. This is a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau on marketing, on branding, right, a cohesive brand between the Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Visitors Bureau, and, and a new campaign with We Are Davies County, right? So we all came together and we hired a group called Marketing Alliance to redo our websites, increase the functionality, increase the, the curb appeal of our websites, bring us together as a family of brands, family of organizations, and really try to do our best to tell the Davies County story, right? That is something that is obviously incumbent upon the Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber, and the Visitors Bureau. We are those organizations that are marketing Davies County to the outside world, right? To prospects, to individuals, to, and organizations looking to invest in our community. And, and as we know, you have to have a top-notch online presence in order to do that outreach effectively. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback on this from our partners outside of Davies County, from the state, from even national organizations on what we're doing here. So if you haven't had a chance to take a look at our website or those three websites, including We Are Davies County, I'd encourage you to do so. And then the next slide, I want to share with you a video. We don't have sound. Their way to... A lot better with the sound, I promise.
Pretty good without it too, I mean, it's great.
What's that?
Good without it.
Yeah, nice visuals without it, right? Yeah.
Know that guy?
Oh, yeah. Good-looking guy.
Their way we can figure that out?
Oh, you're missing the best part.
I know, I know, right? I mean, we, we stole. Hey. I think it's on the screen. that's great, but if not, we can only follow up. You can find it on our website, on weardaviescounty.com. It does feature Nathan Gabhart, right, as founder of True Scripts, talking about Davies County and why, why he chose Davies County to invest his business in, right? So I think that the key theme that we tried to hit on here are the people in Davies County, right? And that really puts that personal touch with our community when we're talking with prospects. In several interviews, folks, site visits that I had with prospects, they've all, you know, it's, it's really a very rewarding experience to sit in my shoes and watch their fates light up when they talk, when they talk about investing their business in, in our community, right? Because then they can see that there are others that are doing that, right? And they see that, hey, this is a real community, these are, these are people that are investing here that love this place, and you know what, that, that gives them that, that sense of feeling, that belonging that they, that they're investing in, right? So, yeah, I'm sorry that didn't work out, but please do take a look at weardaviescounty.com, it's, it's the first thing that comes up there. So, next slide, please. There we go. So a little bit of what we're looking forward to, next slide. Programs that we're focusing on, the Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative, also known as READY, that is a statewide program where the state took much of, many of their ARPA dollars, and they have invested those in regions across the state. They actually invested in every region that came together through this program. The region that we are participating in is the Indiana Uplands. It's a group of about 11 counties that came together, they were formed initially through the Regional Opportunities Initiative and investment from the Lilly Foundation. $30 million in funding is coming to that 11-county region, and in the past month, they've launched two programs, READY Communities and READY Housing. READY Communities is focused on quality of place projects, talent attraction projects, talent retention, retention projects and infrastructure in our communities. We're actually working with several communities in Davies County, potentially the town of Oden, potentially the town of Montgomery, to turn in letters of interest for infrastructure projects that they're working on. I'm aware of several other organizations that are applying as well. This is the program that we received funding, initial funding for on the Commons and for some infrastructure work up at Westgate as well. So we'll be anxious to see what happens with that program. Another is READY Housing, exactly as the name implies, it is put in place to help communities partner with developers to bring additional market rate housing to, to communities in the uplands. That is one we're actively tracking as well for some larger projects that we have our eyes on. It's a $500,000 minimum grant, requires a one-to-one match, so you have to have a, a minimum of a million, of a million dollars going into infrastructure in these projects. So that's pretty significant, right? For the Kirsten's project alone, it's a 10-acre site, it's a smaller development, but there was only about $500, $550,000 in infrastructure that went into that. that went into that. So just to, to kind of put a picture to the scale that we're looking at. Emerging Technologies is one that we're actively tracking through that regional, regional plan as well. Westgate stands to play a pretty major role as it relates to those emerging technologies. I don't know if you all saw within the past week, Skywater Technologies announced a semiconductor manufacturing plant, a fabrication plant up at West Lafayette, right? The Department of Defense is actively working on microelectronics, right? And NSWC Crane, that is one of their key, key areas, right? Driving their growth. So we're actively tracking some microelectronics and semiconductor projects at Westgate in, in the region as well. That emerging technologies component of the READY Plan stands to play a major role in those projects, right? So, next slide, please. And last but certainly not least is the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program. I know we've been exchanging some emails on that. This is a successor program to the very highly praised Stellar Communities Program that the Office of Community and Rural Affairs led up. In 2020, they actually put a hold on Stellar and then they, they took about a year to re-envision the program and tied that to communities and how they are investing in themselves to recover from the pandemic, right? And through that process, they devised HELP, the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program. We're one of nine communities that have been selected for this process. We applied this past fall. We are in Cohort Two that is officially launching, launching this next month with the city of Vincennes and with Dubois County. So kind of a Southwest cohort that will be launching. The first cohort is already well underway. I believe that's three northern counties, Casco, and several others. The last cohort will start in January of this next year, and that's East Central Indiana. So the intent of this program is to identify legacy projects to invest the community, community resources in such as our ARPA funds, right? That is the intent. Thirty percent of the county's ARPA funds have to be set aside for investing in projects identified through this process. And up to a million dollars in a matching grant from Ocre will be coming to the county within a year to put towards one of those legacy projects based around economic vitality, broadband, quality of place, and talent, right? Those four major areas. Through that process, we do have to hire a community coordinator to lead this process. I, I will actually be in front of you at our next meeting, the next meeting with a, a proposed contract on how we put that together. I know in preliminary conversations with some of you and with the county council, the preference has been to have that position housed underneath our organization because we'll be actively working towards this, right? So we're looking to partner with the county and the city to provide the funding towards that. And then in the first year, Ocre will be providing twenty thousand dollars back towards that, right? But they're looking for, to us to sustain that, that position for at least two years. So, all right, next slide. Okay. And there's our bright smiling faces, the DCEDC team. That's our group, myself, obviously Jill Campbell, our project manager, and Shay Jones, our new business office manager who started in November. So with that, we're obviously very grateful for our partnership with you all. We couldn't do it without you, right? And we're looking forward to what's to come. So, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you.
The, the video.
Yeah.
I wish you would have got the, and it's very impressive, but that was actually put together by a former CEO student. Blaine Foose.
Yeah.
And then, and then just on a side note, I'm a recovering economic developer.
How's that working for you?
Just listen, this makes me tired, but I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And it's the slide that you had about additional tax revenues.
Yeah.
And again, it's a position you can't take credit for all that because you work, you just facilitate and serve as a catalyst. But what's taken place has been great.
Yeah.
And at some point in time, if that continues, we should see an impact to the tax rate.
Absolutely.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah.
And so, but no, great job.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah.
I appreciate it, Brian.
Okay.
No, thank you so much.
Take care. Yep.
Keep it up.
Thanks.
All right, we got the SIDC Housing Rehabilitation Rehabilitation Bit Awards. Looks like there's two bids that we need to accept. It is DC dash twenty-one dash one-ten, the Kenneth Benden Hall, thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. And project number DC dash twenty-one dash one-eleven, Kenneth Benden Hall, also one hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and five dollars. You guys have any more questions on that?
No.
Ron, if not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we got release of lien of SIDC. This is. So the housing rehab project has one house completed and I have attached another general contract release of lien for the auditor commissioner to present to sign. That's on their subcontractor lease. You don't have a chance to look that over?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Questions, if not, look for a motion to approve the release of lien, of the lien. Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, ADA Compliance Training. Morning, Rodney.
Good morning, everyone. Rodney Moller with the ADA Director for Davies County. Just like to, we've been trying to figure out ways to bring Davies County to be compliant with our ADA plans. And we have three different ways that I'd kind of like to propose a little bit, give you some ideas. Judy Thorman had put together a slideshow and, which it was very well done. I really feel that she's covered it well. And we thought the easiest ways to present this to our, our employees, get it out to all those who are employed by Davies County, we have kind of three different ways. There is, there's a larger, we could hire another group to come in or get a online course, which was an idea to pass that along here. So there's one called Traliant, and they would cover not only the ADA, but their sexual harassment, there's a whole bunch of different things, but it would also incur more cost. Next one would be that we would bring all the employees in here and I could read through the slide system that we have been provided. And then they would just sign off and then they'd be compliant. Or we also thought about taking it, sending this email form to each desktop throughout the county to each, each employee, and then possibly having their department heads with the paper that they could sign off on and then return that back to myself or Jen. So we're just kind of looking for a little bit of direction how we'd like to proceed to get Davies County compliant.
This is a, just a one-time training, right? Per employee? And then all new employees would take the, take some kind of training to?
Yes, the new hires would come, all the new hires would go through Jen and then she would show them the, the slides and get them compliant before they even hire all the way in, so.
Got any suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, what we've done in the past, especially when we had pharmacies in multiple cities, we'd send it out to the managers of each location, give them a timeline, and they had to submit it back to us within a certain timeline that they had certified all their employees. Perhaps sending it out to all the department heads, give them a thirty-day window or whatever it is, where we're not rushing them. Say it's required that all employees have to, have to do this. And then if we see employees that haven't done it, then we, then there is a process we follow. At some point, in order to get your paycheck, you'll have to, have to go through this.
Exactly.
So.
What, what option do you think about using, just using the slideshow we got?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was well done. I was very happy with it.
Yeah, but then there'd be some sort of, you know, verification form or whatever that they have, did it, and there's a question.
Can your office take care of that?
So which way, I mean, which way do you think? Which way do you like?
I think the most cost-effective and the most thorough way would be that we would get, send it out to everyone, just like we're speaking there. I think that would be the most, that'd be the simplest, most effective way. It'd be less, the least intrusive as well, so.
Yeah.
That way we can just get it done and everybody's compliant and we are only up for Davies County.
Yeah, and I think we give them a thirty-day window. And then the ones who don't do it, we give them a fifteen-day notice that no paychecks will be issued after the end of that forty-fifth day. And forty-five days, I mean, that's enough, right?
How long is it? How long the training is it?
It's only around fifteen minutes, I believe. It doesn't take long. It depends on how fast you would read, but it's good information that's in there. It's not terribly long.
I think you did this on the, on the.
Yeah, it's like two.
County time, too.
Yeah, they did on county time.
County time, it shouldn't be no big deal.
That, that's kind of thought I would do is, you know, because you know there's going to be some stragglers who don't, don't do it. But we're not going to babysit this thing into October, you know?
But you'd probably have more stragglers if you brought, brought them all in here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the loss of efficiency to pull everyone in here and just the drive time and all these folks be driving for them.
All right.
So, so I guess our goal would be to have this thing done by, you know, let's, let's say September fifteenth.
Okay.
I mean.
Well, that's pretty quick.
Well, if you do a thirty-day notice.
September thirtieth would be a good timeline to get it done by.
That's seventy days, but I'm just.
We're gonna, all right, I don't know if you, you guys ready to send this out on slideshow?
Work together, but yeah, it wouldn't be very long, probably.
Okay. If you want. Fifteenth of September would be fine, then. Guess I think you can get it out.
Yeah, the second, let's call the first meeting, the second meeting is September.
Okay.
And could you report back to us the second meeting in September? Then that gives them a good, you know, eighty days.
Right. Okay. Last meeting, September.
Make a motion?
Yes, actually, that's right. A motion?
So, probably make a motion. So we got, we're going to use the slideshow from Judy Thoman and then get, send it out to the employee, to all the, yeah, department heads for the employees to watch, give them thirty days to watch it. If the ones that don't comply, they got fifteen more days. And after that, then it'll be a paycheck held up until it's done.
So September twenty-seventh. So yeah, I'd make a motion to complete all ADA training by September twenty-seventh.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Rodney. I appreciate it.
Good job, Rodney.
All right, we got the sub, we sent me a semi-annual report. This is from Washington Township Fire Station, the new one, show guide presented on a few years back. You guys had a chance to read that report or any, Henry, anything on it?
I don't have any questions.
Rodney, anything on it?
Did not see anything, but.
If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We got all kinds of annual reports to do. We got the SIDC twenty-twenty-two annual report for COVID-1 and COVID-2 payments. That was all the payments that paid during pand- pandemic through Ocre. I think the first calling was fi- up to five thousand dollars and the second calling is up to ten thousand dollars. You guys have any questions on it?
No, just glad that phase is over. It's painful.
We are too.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks Davies County Economic Development to take that over and get that done. I know that was huge, huge amount of work and trying to figure out how to, yeah, trying to figure out exactly how to get the everybody grouped together so that we can get people paid. So there's a huge undertaking.
Calling businesses.
Boarding, yeah. You guys haven't, don't have any more questions? I'll look for a motion to approve both reports, COVID-1 and COVID-2 annual report. Got anything else?
Sorry, our attorney was bothering me. What did you say? I don't have any other questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next thing on the agenda is the Davies County Government Center Financial Summary Report twenty-twenty-two. They finally got the last payment paid for the parking lot. So just gave the public some numbers of what this building costs and what the, what the project looked like. This is just a snapshot, something really simple. There's not a lot of description. I think I've got some description in there. I'll just read down through here. Financial Summary Report twenty-twenty-two, annexed estimated cost from Lamar Architecture Design, January fifth, twenty eighteen. Building cost eight million thirty-nine thousand three hundred and five dollars. Furniture cost three hundred and one thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Owners rep one hundred and fifty thousand. Architecture engineer, three hundred and sixty thousand. Grand total, eight million eight hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents. That was just the architect's estimate back at the time. Of course, the bids came in lower than that. We had four funds that we paid this building out of and all the projects surrounding this, this building. Line item forty-eight oh one, which is the bond, of two point nine million dollars. Line item forty-eight oh two, cash on hand from the county, is five million dollars. Line item eleven thirty-eight, cum cap, six hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and eleven dollars was spent on all of that. Lamar Architects in that, in the same line item, Lamar Architecture Design was paid three hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Dongress for parking lot and additional parking lot, three hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Elite Environmental for asbestos removal, with seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And then line item zero zero six eight, Commissioner's Budget, total on it was three hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And I'll just give you just some, just brief descriptions. Purchased three homes at two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Appraisal of four homes, three thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. AT&amp;T removal of overhead line, that was the one across the parking lot, twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Price electric, final payment was twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's for the parking lot. Legal for ice mill or annex settlement. And I forgot to put in, I think Grant had a dollar in that too, but it was ninety-three thousand seven hundred and four dollars for the settlement between Jasper Lumber and Davies County. Demo of two homes at sixteen thousand three hundred, three hundred dollars. Byron Sanders, which done the audit, the first audit on the annex, at ten thousand dollars. That total was three hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Bring the project total to eight million nine hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and nine dollars. And then just on the back page here on line item, just line item forty-eight oh one and forty oh two, we have some change orders and additional work that was performed to this building that was out of the scope of the project. I'm just going to read down through a few of these and just the ones that were the bigger projects. Change orders came in at three hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. Jasper Lumber Company settlement, when we fired him, was one hundred thousand. Jasper Lumber Company settlement, when we fired him, was one hundred thousand dollars. We hired Dan Co Construction to finish this building, which is the second contractor. Their bid was five hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. RQAW Architecture was the second architect on this building, to finish the building at fifty-seven, fifty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. Delaware Glass refitted all the curtain wall windows that you see around the building. That was paid without a change order because we were trying to keep the project going between the settlement. That was paid one hundred and seven thousand six hundred dollars. We purchased the Cecil property on the corner over here, two four, two fifteen Northeast Fourth Street, for the additional parking lot, that's sixty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars. Legal for the settlement of the annex is paid out of forty oh one, forty oh two, was Schwarzer Trooper and Terry Sword, of twenty thousand one hundred and sixty-six, twenty thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Smart Construction done the drywall in the basement in the, in the non-office areas, just to finish, finish the floors out, but finish the walls under eight thousand dollars. TS Boyd for storage of furniture, because the building went completely sideways, got off schedule, and the furniture was pushed back twice, and so we had to, we had to get the property, we had to get the furniture from Kimball somewhere, so we had to store them. Tom Boyd done that for us. KW Fencing, we put fencing across the back wall, fenced in the dumpster and utilities on the east side, and then all the fencing in the basement for storage. That came at twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then the owner's rep, second contract for completion of the annex, so that was above and beyond his first original contract, at two hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The total changes and additions, one million five hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and four dollars. We've been trying to get that number out for a long time. I know everybody's been waiting for it, so if you guys have any more questions on it, you can reach out to me. This will be in the auditor's office for the total on it. And I did reach out to the council yesterday, and everybody seemed fine with the numbers, and they said, I hope this is a wrap on this project, and I'm, I'm ready to wrap it up, too. I'm tired of dealing with, it's been a long time coming, so. You guys have any, anything else?
You're considering this the closeout report on the project?
Yes.
If I understand correctly. It is certainly, first off, I need to say a few things. And this was a contention when I ran for this office. If you hadn't gotten involved when you did, I'm convinced the county would have spent a million more dollars than what they spent. You did an excellent job, but you were put in a position that you never should have been put in. And we can go through the numbers and argue that one way or the other. And again, most reports that I've been involved in with large projects has actual budget, the overrun on the budget for the line item. That's all water under the bridge. At the end of the day, and I referenced the report Mr. Sanders did, is Lamar failed in what he did, Jasper Lumber failed in what he did.
Yeah.
The failure of our contracting, which prohibited us from exercising the performance bond. And I had a hard time getting information, or I had emails that they said weren't there. And I think that has been corrected from this summary and when we move forward on the courthouse. But again, I appreciate the work you've done, but I still have the opinion that the county spent a lot of money they didn't need to spend because we were put in a position mainly by our legal team and our contracting that didn't allow us to take the appropriate action.
And I just want to look, like I said, I'm just, we got a good building here. It's, it's a very nice building, and we tried to, tried to do everything we could to get it to fruition, and so I just want to move forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're looking at the courthouse over there for renovation, and hopefully it's a lot better project and a lot better, a lot better handled than, than this previous project, so.
Well, anyone who's been, anyone who's been involved in a number of different projects, he had the best of intentions starting off the project, and then we've all done home remodels, we've all done our own projects, and some of them go awry. But one thing that the media can vouch for is we had annex updates every commissioner's meeting, because I was president for those four years. Every commissioner's meeting, we had updates, the good, the bad, the ugly, right? We could have hit so many of these issues, but we disclosed every issue we were having, we disclosed as we were having it. This is three, four years ago, and so we mitigated this to the best of our ability. We fired the contractors and started over. In a government project, most government officials would have just kept on, kept keeping on, and the issues would have been twenty years down the road, would have been someone else's problem. When we originally built this building, the first request I had to all the architects is I want a worst-case scenario number. And we had a meeting actually in Offordsville, if you remember, right, way back, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. I don't want a low numbered, I don't want a low-ball number, then we get into it, and it's a million or two higher, and you can't go anywhere else. So they came in at eight point eight, and I said, can we afford it? We had five million dollars on hand, and then we borrowed two point nine. We got the bids back, it's a million or so below that, and we were ecstatic. Nowhere in our wildest dreams would we thought we would have to fire the architect and the GC, and, which was extremely expensive. They did take like about six hundred thousand dollars on the chin in order to walk away. So Michael was involved in this project from day one, and in hindsight, from our legal team, through Ice Miller, through Grant, through Sorge, through all those folks, clearly we all could have done things differently in hindsight, but we all approved it, we all were on the same page, and we were not going to build a sub-part building. We're going to build a hundred-year building, and that was our goal. And that's what, that's why with Michael's leadership is what we did. So our focus now needs to be on the courthouse, which we get in that place at under eight point nine, we'll be dancing, right? So we want to learn from the past and work together as a team moving forward. So I just want to commend Michael and all the time and effort he's put on this project, and it's, it's great to, to move forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just say, I'm just one of three commissioners, so alone, I have no say-so in anything. But when there's mistakes made like this, I honestly feel there needs to be research and determined who's responsible. And it sounds like you just want to be done with it, and that's your decisions.
Well, and that's the problem with throwing out negative campaigns three years before you have any of the facts. You came in with your mind made up that this project was a disaster, and then when you, when we spend two years uncovering the facts, we spent ten thousand dollars bringing one of your guys in to do an audit, and he doesn't find anything. So I would just request that if there's mistakes that we made specifically to find those mistakes, put them on a commissioner meeting, and let's talk about them. But these broad statements that we made a mistake and we're just covering it up is just factually inaccurate, because that's not what occurred.
Again, I don't want to beat this dead horse. If you read the report, and he wasn't one of my guys, I knew nothing of him prior than him being hired. It states in his report about the audit found, findings, the contract reviews down the architect's contract, had glaring errors, omissions, conflicting verbiage, and also with the other contracts. And I'll just give you one example, the contract, the second contract, where your construction manager stated that he would oversee the tuck pointing and window replacement at the courthouse and finish the annex. The annex was under contract already, and I don't think those other two issues got done. Now, that being said, you have to take into account going through COVID and the delays. But again, the contracting according to Mr. Sanders, but it's, whereas the big thing is on the performance contract, and I just found this out at the end of the year after searching for a year and a half, why wasn't the performance bond executed? And the reason it wasn't, the last thing I was told, and I can't prove that it's accurate or not, supposedly Lamar changed six pages of the initial contract going into the project, which gave him full control of the project rather than the county. And so he released Jasper for convenience rather than cause, which left him off the hook, and we couldn't draw against the performance bond. You take out a performance bond to protect yourself, and that would have saved, if we could have exercised that, would have saved the county hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, but then you also put yourself at risk of they bring their own people in to finish the building, and you don't know what you get. That was consideration, too.
You have the same controls over that, and again, they're exercised every day.
So, all right, we're going to move on. I'm done with this building. It's finished.
And again, Michael, the work you did was over and above, but you never should have been put in that position, so. Thank you very much.
If not, gentlemen, you guys have anything else?
Uh, no. I don't have anything.
Anybody else have anything? If not, like to look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and adjourn?
So moves.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Still present on that one, so I'm just going to leave you as president. Yeah. What's that?